Mr. Walsh, would you be on us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the regular school committee meeting on Monday, May 1st, 2023. Are there any people online?
There are not.
Okay. Executive session, not at this time. School committee members and student reports. School committee chair report, there isn't one tonight. The mayor was unable to be here tonight. Resource committee, we met this past week and it was just a short meeting. And we went over the enrollment update. We went over the FY24 budget update. It was a very short meeting for resource committee. The school building needs. We had a number of projects for our school building needs. Pittsburgh High School projects completed. Emergency replacement of emergency transfer switch. Preventive maintenance on sewage pumps. Biannual energy generator prevent maintenance. Annual cooling equipment preventive maintenance completed and ready for changeover. Storage shed athletic roof repaired. Crocker Field updates, completed projects. New locks have been installed and keys issued. New trash cans installed. Spring cleaning is underway. Bathrooms and water have been turned on. South Street Learning Center updates, completed projects. Two new custodians came onboard to bring the school to full staff. New fence installed in the back parking lot. Cooling equipment preventive maintenance. Biannual emergency generator preventive maintenance completed. Rhingold Elementary School, new gym pads installed on walls. Temporary classroom floor and hallway has been redone. The stage asbestos ceiling abated in preparation for new curtains to be installed. Brush cleanup underway all around the school. Biannual in it emergency generator preventive maintenance completed. Crocker Elementary School updates, completed projects. Bids received on temporary roof repair on the lower wing, working with Rockwell Building. Biannual emergency generator preventive maintenance completed. Longchamp Middle School cleanup of outside has begun. Abated asbestos pipes in dishroom. Biannual energy generator preventive maintenance completed. Memorial Middle School update completed project. Cooling equipment and biannual emergency generator preventive maintenance completed. Goodrich Academy update completed projects. Paul continues to work away at small projects around the building. District-wide OSHA custodial training completed. Water testing started this week. That was it for the building needs.
May I have a ask a question, sir?
Pardon?
May I ask a question, two questions?
Yes, you may.
Okay. For the two new custodians that came onboard, what school were they assigned to?
One at Longchamp Middle School, which is the second largest facility in the district.
Needed?
And then the other one is kind of a float person who's housed at Fitchburg High School, but really will work around the district as the need arises if somebody's out or if there's a need somewhere else for like a special project of some sort.
Okay. Is it all taken care of at Goodrich Academy? Do we have everyone that we need in place at Goodrich Academy?
In terms of custodial staffing, yeah, I think so. And then as a, you know, potentially a larger project would be required, that floater would actually go help over there as needed, too.
Correct, okay, thank you. And the next question has to do with, you said that there were some small repair begun at Goodrich Academy. Can you specify what are those? Because it was a list of things that were suggested. I don't know if when it's.
While you're looking for that, Mr. Stevens, so I can update that Mr. Richardson was there today.
Okay.
With a team to address the rug squares that are in the center of the rooms. Those will be replaced. So they were getting a quote, you know, the measurements and so forth on those. And then also some of the ceiling roof repairs, ceiling repairs in the classrooms as well. So the company will take care of both of those. And then the project manager was there last Thursday to address the larger project, which is repairing the roof and then repointing the bricks around the facility, too.
Thank you so much, sir. Remember, all students deserve the best and Goodrich Academy has a whole bunch of students that are all students and we would like to see them get the best.
What I listed, what was completed?
Okay.
And there's a list still that they're working on.
Working on, perfect.
As they complete the list, then I will.
Update.
Update the list that's been completed.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Policy committee, not here tonight. Student support.
Nothing to report, sir.
School personnel committee, the mayor's not here. Executive committee, the mayor's not here. Student reps, not here tonight. Can we have approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting?
Motion approved, minutes of Monday, April 24th, 2023.
We have a second?
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
I just wanted to point out, excuse me, if I may?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out one, one thing. At that meeting, oh no, this is the regular school committee and I thought it was the part, you were asking, were you asking about the policy subcommittee?
No, no, no.
Another regular.
Adrian's not here tonight, thank you.
A second motion?
We had a second and everybody in favor.
Well, I just have one question about the way the subcommittee was reported, but how do I get that in?
Which?
The subcommittee, which is here listed as part of the regular meeting. You know, a summary is here.
Okay. You have a question on the summary of the?
Yeah, yeah.
Policy committee?
Right, I just wanted to point out that in regards to having specifically, it was a transgender issue on being allowed to take part in girls' sports activities. And I voted no on that and the head of the committee voted.
I don't have in front, are you listed as yes? You voted no, are you listed as yes?
No, but I wanted to explain that it wasn't, it was insufficient, it wasn't clear to the actually what happened. The head of the committee voted yes and because there wasn't a third person at the policy committee to be a tiebreaker, it was just, just mentioned that there was none.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, it's a small thing.
I would say, bring that up with Mr. Hogan.
I'm bringing it up to the committee just to clarify, yeah, okay.
Communications, Mr. Jokel.
Honestly, we have to say.
Call the vote on the motion again. Is everybody in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Communications, Mr. Jokel.
I'm not.
Public comment.
My name is Katie Schmidt and I am here tonight as the executive director, treasurer of the Fitchburg Education Association. You should also know that I am a resident of Fitchburg. For all 47 years of my life, I received my bachelor's degree in mathematics and my master's degree in education from Fitchburg State College. And I have dedicated my entire professional teaching career to the students of Fitchburg, 25 years and counting. And if my calculations are correct, I have about 14 more years to go, so I'm not going anywhere anytime soon. Let me be clear, I love Fitchburg. I love my school. I love my students. I love teaching. Being a teacher is not a job, it is simply who I am, who we all are. We have the greatest job on the planet and no one can convince me otherwise. But I am not here tonight simply as a teacher. I am also an officer in my union. And as an officer, it is my duty to represent my members. It is my duty to ensure that the district is following the contract. And it is my duty to stand here tonight and tell the school committee and the general public, who's listening, wherever you are, that the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the clerical staff and the custodians are not happy with what is going on in our schools. Now let me recap a little bit. Back in November, we took a vote of no confidence on the superintendent. It was a last resort action that we didn't actually want to do, but we did because no one was listening or acting on our concerns. We sent a letter to you, the school committee, privately, I might add. And the response came back, not from you, but from the superintendent. And it came back very publicly. And we were shocked, to put it mildly. And we were disappointed. So we came to a school committee and we rallied outside to hopefully show you that we were real people with real concerns. We weren't just a piece of paper or a couple of union officers just making a stink. You did at that point agree to meet with us and we appreciated that. You listened and we were grateful. And we were hopeful that we could finally work together and make sure that our students have the things that they need. But then your response came back. And it was incredibly dismissive and it was deflective. We should have been shocked, but honestly, we weren't. We were heartbroken. And quite frankly, now we're angry. We're angry because you've completely missed the point. When we bring up the fact that we don't have the proper furniture we need in our classrooms, it's not because we're greedy and we want shiny new things, it's because our students don't have what they need to learn. When we bring up the fact that our teachers don't get a lunch break or their prep time, it's not because we want to put up our feet on our desks and eat bonbons, it's because we actually need time to prepare to do our jobs and I don't know, maybe eat a sandwich so that we can function and actually continue to take care of our students. When we bring up the fact that staffing is an issue, it's not because we want to do less work, it's because we're in very unsafe situations and we're worried about our students and about each other. There are some other issues, I'll call it the double standard. It's literally our job to communicate effectively. Yet no one communicates important information to us directly. Most of the time, we read it about it on social media, just along with the general public. I was here at a school committee one night, school committee meeting one night, when the police chief was talking about school safety and he said that the best first line of defense is when the students and staff see something, say something. Yet when our staff do that about issues in our buildings, admin doesn't address our concerns. If staff don't reply to an email right away to a principal or to a parent, or do not get some other task out of the countless extra things we're expected to do other than teach done right away, it becomes a huge issue. Yet when the union files a grievance and it makes it all the way through the process to the school committee, school committee gets to wait weeks and weeks, well past the contractual deadline, to respond to that grievance. And somehow that's okay. I could go on, but I won't. I have a pile of quizzes at home waiting that I need to go home and correct. So I'll just finish with this. We're angry because you, we asked for your help and you ignored us. We go to our schools every day to take care of our students. It's time that you take care of us, your employees. It's time that you listen. It's time that you act. We are the Fitchburg Education Association and we are Union Strong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Union Strong, 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 Union Strong.
Superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. So tonight we have summer programming and I don't know if.
I am here.
Mr. Thompson.
I am here today, yeah.
Summer programming this evening, so take it away.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Jokel. Unfortunately, Jen Fisher could not be with us tonight, she had a prior engagement. But I just wanted to update everyone that last week, we did push out our summer registration. And as of an hour ago, actually as of now, we currently have 634 students who have applied and who are interested in summer programming. We're very excited about that. I did want to share with everyone the opportunities that we have this summer for our students. First, I'm going to start with Fitchburg High, High School students. We will be hosting our summer pursuits program at the high school, which is overseen by Kathy Heitn in conjunction with the Mass Hire. We'll be hosting the high school program from June 26th to July 28th at the high school. We have about 60 slots available for students. Also, at the high school, from July 10th to August 3rd, students who need to make up credits will have the opportunity for credit recovery during those dates. So that's another opportunity available for our students. And then, as always, we have our special education programming happening for our elementary, middle and high school students who require services over the summer, from July 5th to August 3rd. And then the other program that we have, like the last few summers, we have our elementary and middle school summer program going on from July 10th to August 3rd. We have about 300 slots available at the elementary level and 150 slots available at the middle school level for that program. And then in addition to that, we also have a middle school academic program, students who need to make up any credits or actually get their grade up for middle school. We have a middle school program available for them, which will run July 17th to August 3rd. And we have room for about 75 students there. We are also running a peer mediation training for students aged 12 to 16, from July 31st to August 3rd. We have about 15 to 20 slots available for kids there. The other program that we're offering, we have an opportunity to send our students to the Starbase program at Hanscom Air Force Base to be involved in some science activities there. We have students between 12 and 17 slots available and that is from July 17th to July 21st. And then finally, we have some other programming available. We have our special education early childhood program available at South Street Elementary School for those students who need additional services in the summer. And then last but not least, we have our Journeys program for students in grades one and two. That will be run at South Street. We have about 75 slots available for that and that will run from July 10th to July 27th. So like I said, we have about 634 students who have already applied. And, you know, we sent this out last week and I want to say by the next day, we had over 500 applicants already. So I'm meeting with Jen Fisher this week because we may need to actually go out and ask for more staff to see if they can work to meet the need. So we may be opening some more slots, but we need to find the staff to do that. So that was just a quick breakdown of the summer programs that will be offered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Dr. Knight?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Not about the beautiful things that you're going to be doing over the summer, it's about when, a couple meetings ago, I had asked if the furniture that was required at these schools were purchased and, you know?
Yes.
Yes.
So when we hear the union come in and say that they, you know, ask us to do things and we ignore them, you know, I, I feel very uncomfortable because I would like to know what can I do in addition? We never talk about anything after they are gone. How do, how do I know what, what else I need to do? Do I need to call someone personally?
I mean, I can address, you know.
I was going to bring something up.
Okay.
Under budget, under budget update.
Okay.
Okay, and then let's address that under budget update.
Very good, thank you, sir, I just had to ask.
Okay.
Just quickly, is the response that you had this year, is this much larger number than previous years? It's about the same as of now.
Okay.
I'm, we, we sent emails out to every family. We did not post it on social media. Or did we post it on our website? So this is just through emails to our family and we already have 634 students who are interested.
Good, that's great, that's great.
So what age did you say they, they were, what grades?
From, all the way from kindergarten, first grade, all the way up to high school.
Where was your, your chief response from?
The elementary school.
Really?
Yep.
It just, a question popped into my mind when you, when you mentioned Hanscom Air Force Base, what, what is the program there?
So it's a called, it's a Starbase program, that's for STEM science opportunities.
Did that, that follow the appearance of the woman that spoke here earlier, who had been to Alaska and?
Karaswini?
Yeah. Was that an outgrowth of her?
It was, this is an opportunity that we've been doing now for, I want to say about two years. So it's something that actually, they reached out to us about the opportunity and my science director, Jessica Stedowski, she is, has a strong relationship with the Starbase program on Hanscom Air Force Base in addition to Jen Fisher. So they've actually reached out to us. Another district actually dropped out of sending their students there that opened an opportunity up for our students, so we jumped on that right away.
So that's a Starbase program?
Starbase program, yep.
No further questions. Multilingual Learn a Parent Resource video.
So I'd like to go a little bit out of sequence, we're expecting actually the person who helped create these two videos, Dave Cartunin, he's driving out here from, I'll say, the eastern part of the state. So we'll wait a few minutes, but I think maybe before that, we can just basically just have our final say on the school calendar for next year, which I think we made one small change with regards to.
Anything on that?
The first week of school, John, wasn't, wasn't that where we had the pre-kindergarten, kindergarten orientation and.
Yeah, she went back and highlighted. Based on, I think Jim brought that up, so she went back and on the right, you can see now there's a blue box showing us that pre-K and K orientation are the fifth, sixth and seventh.
So that's, that's for vote tonight. The calendar accidentally did not make the agenda last meeting, so there was no vote on the calendar. Apologize for that oversight. So I think maybe if we can just go out of sequence and hopefully in the next 10 minutes, Mr. Cartunin will return. Mr. H, you want to?
Fitchburg High School, Bob, anything on Fitchburg High School?
Oh, the principal search, thank you. So the search is actively underway, there were 14 applicants for the principalship. There are eight interviews scheduled over the next couple days, tomorrow and Wednesday. There's a search committee that has been vetting the applications and so first round interviews are this week and the plan is to have second round interviews next week. So we're trying to finalize the, the dates and times that various groups will meet with the prospective candidates.
Okay, any questions?
Question, who comprises the search committee for the principals?
Who comprises the search committee? Well, I can tell you in general, there are members of teaching staff, we have one, I think, special education, one ESL, two general education. This was a proposed, I don't have the final figures here, and actually, one of the unit members could give you a name by name breakdown. We have paraprofessional staff, we have two students, we have a couple parents, I know we have a city counselor who's on that search process. And, and also a union rep is on that committee. Thank you.
May we have a list of who was that on that committee? Would you provide that with us?
I can share it with you, I don't have that list on me right now.
Maybe next, next meeting or whatever.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm not on it this time. And I, Dr. Knight, you, you're not on it this time either, right?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
On the principal search committee?
No, not this time.
Dr. Knight and I were on the last one and it was a good, a good group on that search committee and I'm sure this one is also. Okay, I think we've completed superintendent's report except for the videos.
Okay, so Mr. Cartunin is four minutes away, so I think Jeremy, if you want to just go forward with the, the budget.
Why don't we go to budget update and, okay. On budget update, my question was going to be about furniture, do we have money for furniture and where do we stand on furniture?
Yes. Yeah, so great question and, and there is funding available for furnishings. In fact, just this past week, met with South Street, we'll be submitting another $76,000 requisition for additional furnishings and related materials, so some rugs and other classroom type items that are essential for pre-K and K. In addition to that, Goodrich is making another purchase of some chairs and desks. Memorial just completed another $12,000 purchase about two weeks ago. And in the development of the overall budget, I just happen to be looking at it recently. We have, we have invested 1.2 million in furniture this year. That goes back to summer purchases and then purchases throughout this school year. I would say McKay and Rhingold have had the largest investment, but every school has had at least a minimum of 30, 30, $35,000. It's based on requests, it's based on certainly the redistricting process going back to, you know, the, about this time last year, really. And Craig Shalfo did a great job with the team in getting that together. And then throughout this year, there's been a significant amount of additional furnishing that has been ordered and purchased to address anything that was, you know, maybe you realized a little bit after the fact that, that we could use this, we could use that. So I think there has been a big investment and it can continue to be. Again, I met with principals as recently as this past week, so I know Superintendent Jokel wanted to maybe jump in.
No, I guess really maybe to address the question that Dr. Knight had was, is there any furniture that is, that has not been received that was missed perhaps last summer as part of the redistricting?
The most recent furnishings have come in, in fact, Fitchburg, I had a delivery today when I was over there.
But in terms of South Street, McKay, they're all set?
For those, those most recent, I think it was about a $300,000 order of those items, the lead times are eight to 12 weeks at times, but those orders were completed in early to mid-April.
Specifically, there were a group of special education children that were sitting on the floor and did not have furniture. I don't remember what school they were from. Did they receive their furnitures?
Yeah, so I believe that was Crocker, possibly McKay. And again, those orders that have been placed throughout the course of the year in like, I would say three large, pretty significant orders have been, the most recent one was completed within the last probably two to three weeks. And all classrooms have the furnishing that has been identified by the staff that we need this furniture for our particular program or the number of students we have or the size of the students we have, you know, that's, that's a factor as well when you have a pre-K class versus say a, a grade 11 or 12 class. So the furnishing now is, the orders have been completed and, and specifically based on the faculty input, at least the most recent round of orders of like 300 to $350,000 that was done probably in November, December.
Do we know about any school where teachers need furniture, but because someone got shy along the way and didn't place the order, these teachers don't have the furniture they need, they need? I'm just trying to make sure that there is furniture in all the schools, you know, even if somebody did not report it to the right person or ask the correct person.
Sure, I would say without knowing, if, you know, if somebody had said something, that principals have been tasked with making sure and getting into classrooms and seeing.
Okay.
As I said, I met with South Street administrative team last Thursday, we're going to submit another pretty significant order, it's 76,000. We're going to submit another pretty significant order at 76,000. And, and the rationale, I think for South Street especially, is they've had a strong enrollment this year, a very strong enrollment, which is great. And you heard Mr. Thompson's report about even the, the interest in the summer programs. And, and with pre-K and K, some of the pre-K students are three. They're three, four years old. So some size factors came into that. So we are going to place that order, I would say, within the next few days. They're just making, they're going back to the staff one more time to make sure, is there anything else you need? Let's do it now. Because again, one challenge with a lot of, a lot of factors, we heard this in the, in the Crocker building project update last week, is lead times. The lead times can be eight, 12, 16 weeks. You know, when we ordered cafeteria tables this year, some of those were 16 to 20 weeks. And you'd love to have them in a week or two, but just with manufacturing and shipping and, and that type of thing, that's, that's not always possible.
Can you tell us what each school received, the amounts you mentioned? One school, but McKay, all of them, if you'd like to just write them down?
So, so as of probably a week ago, but the numbers will be a little bit higher for Goodrich because we're still figuring out a final order there. So 35,000 at Goodrich, 116,000 Fitchburg High, approximately 60,000 at Long Joe, 137,000 Memorial, 320,000 Rheingold, 350,000 McKay, 46,000 Crocker. And it's going to end up being about 200,000 at South Street when this most recent order is completed.
So that's, there's a huge variance there, two schools getting 320 and 350 and 200.
Yep. I would say Long Joe. Yeah. Long Joe had a pretty newer order about three years ago. So many of their classrooms had been, had been updated within a five-year window. I would say in addition, though Fitchburg High is relatively high and didn't have a significant redistricting issue, they had a pre-K classroom move out, there was a big investment in cafeteria tables there. And, and again, that, we work with SEDEXO around that as well. So it can vary a little bit for sure. You know, Crocker Elementary School has, I think, 1.3 million set aside for the new building. And that's in the, you know, in the, in the project cost total. So, so you know, in that, in that school, it makes sense to be, be using that, those funds for the new building.
How about the other two that are so high, the Rheingold and McKay?
Yeah. So Rheingold's really had an overhaul completely from top to bottom. And McKay, their enrollment is pretty high. I mean, they're in 735, I think, is the most recent enrollment at that school. They, they are, they needed the facilities and they had the, probably the biggest change in terms of redistricting because they went from a pre-K, I believe, to eight, definitely K to eight, to a school that's one to five. So in that situation, you don't have eighth graders sometimes who are 5'10", 6 feet tall. You're back into a true elementary school configuration. So they really needed to re-outfit or outfit totally elementary classrooms. And that is, those are different sized desks in many cases and tables and, and the other types of things that come along with that.
I'm so sorry to be so overbearing, but I just want to make sure I get this right. So the district is planning to invest $35,000 in furniture for Goodrich Academy and it takes six to eight weeks for delivery? Or I got something wrong?
No, that's already been delivered. So if you go into the classrooms.
Oh, it was already delivered?
It has all new tables, new chairs.
Okay.
They're still looking at some other items like a conference room table and desk. They're looking at some more mobile chairs that they can utilize for functions and events. So we have some quotes out and we're trying to get the best price on that at the moment.
At the entrance, there is a big table there, a big old table there. You know, what are the, I mean, I, I don't know if Principal Curry said anything about it, but I mean, it's been.
The one to the left as you go up the stairs?
As soon as you enter the entrance, you know, that, you know.
I'm not sure if that's the one that she's ordered, but we certainly can. I mean, I know the one that she's looking at is.
Please, it needs to, you gotta go.
Yeah. I mean, that, again, I think the message is, is in talking a lot with the principals about this is, if you need materials like this, and I'll be really excited to show you the Student Opportunity Act slides that will demonstrate it, you know, we're in a position right now as a district where we can do that. And it, and it is the right thing to do, to provide the students and the staff with the best equipment, materials, furnishings, whatever it is, to be able to experience their education, the one time they get to do it in grade five or eight or 12 or whatever, and/or the staff member, the teacher, the paraprofessional, whoever it is, who's trying to do their best they can to maximize that student's potential. So again, I'll say it here and we've talked about it, you know, we will continue to do that and don't want people to feel frustrated that they don't have those types of materials. And I think, you know, again, looking at it with 1.2 million invested in the last year, and we should be able to continue to do a big investment like that, you know, we, we are happy to. I mean, really.
Thank you, sir.
Of course. So I can give the update now, I know, or did you want to shift to?
Actually, maybe with.
I just, one more question on budget. I know we have money in there for teachers and I know we don't have enough teachers. Now, we have, and part of it, the grievance that we do not have enough staff. And staff is working through lunch hour and their prep time. Are we compensating these people for these positions for doing this work?
So we have a subbing, we have a memorandum of agreement that the district and the FEA entered into probably October, November timeframe. That allows for situations, as you described, Mr. Stevens, where potentially there's an unfilled or vacant position or potentially just a teacher who happens to be ill or out for that particular day, for a colleague to cover their class during a prep period or absorb students from their classes. So in elementary school, a first grade teacher who's out, we might have to absorb those 20 or 25 students into the other first grade teacher classes for the day. Whereas at the high school level, they could do a prep period and then go into, say, their colleagues' Algebra I or English 10 or whatever it is class. They're compensated $60 a day to do that. So $60 for a period or $60 for absorbing three to five or six students or whatever it might be for the day.
So these teachers that are giving up their prep time or lunchtime are being compensated?
Yeah. Yeah. We get a stack of time sheets every two weeks.
I just want to make sure they're being compensated.
Can I add to that?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens, in addition to that, for teachers who need to have common planning time with another teacher, if their schedules don't work out during the day, they also get compensated to actually meet during, before, after school at the rate of $45 to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
So there's opportunities for them to do that.
Dr. Knight?
Yes. I have been at school where I have seen different approaches. I'm not sure if Fitchburg has been, it doesn't look like we are doing this year. But there's, you know, we don't have enough staff at the different schools. And what are the chances of lessening, lightening the workload of staff over at Central Office so that they can step down to the schools and cover, you know, certain hours of the day or certain days of the week? Because as I said, I've been at schools that when teachers are out and there's not enough teachers, even the principal, you know, step in and cover a math class or a science class so that the teachers can get the break because there's not enough people. How about that? You know, there's pretty, I'm pretty sure there's a lot of free time in some people's hands that, you know, over at Central Office that they could step down and be able to do so. You know, what are the chances of doing that? We don't have enough people. Because it's not fair for the teachers that are working so hard, you know, they, when a teacher, I know, I'm an educator, when a teacher leaves from school, the job is not done. We gotta go home and prepare lesson plans. We gotta go home and grade papers, you know, and we have a life to live. We have family. So teachers are, have all this, this, this assignment on them. And I'm not saying that the other folks don't have work to do, but, you know, they can kick in and help too. All the weight has to fall on the teachers when there's other people that are above them, you know, making a lot of money and the teachers are the only one being squeezed. I don't want to hear the union come back and say, you know, 50 teachers quit because we can't handle it when these people sitting, you know, in other places comfortable and, you know, the teachers are being squeezed to death, you know? So can we do something about this?
So I'd like to address that. So first of all, our teachers have been working extremely hard for the last few years through the pandemic.
Repeat that, sir?
Our teachers have been working extremely hard over the last few years and especially this year is no different. The staffing shortage is hitting communities across the country.
I understand.
I guess, and, and when, on extreme occasions, people from Central Office have, have gone to the schools to help provide coverage.
Oh, okay. So you are doing that?
Yeah. We have done that.
How often, how many times a week do they go?
It's, it's really almost by on request.
On request? Okay. But again, I heard the union, a representative came in and said that teachers are angry because they don't have time for their breaks, you know, they have to do all these things. And I, I think we need to come up with some type of solution so that this doesn't continue to happen. Because if these people walk out, then what are we going to do? What are the children going to do?
I would say that what, we are collaborating with the teachers' union and the school principals to try to come up with alternatives. And as was just discussed, this memorandum, memorandum of understanding on substitutes was mutually agreed to. That doesn't change the reality of when people get sick or are on personal time. So this is, this is a real challenge, not just in Fitchburg, but everywhere. And I guess I, I'm a little taken aback of the characterization that, you know, people in Central Office are, are sitting down and, I don't know.
I'm just saying that the work that they have over at Central Office is certainly not the type of work that the teachers are having because the people from Central Office are not here complaining that they don't have time to take their break. It's the teachers, the ones that are, don't have time to take their break. So evidently, you know, we can, we should be able to balance something so that this doesn't happen. That's, that's the way I see it. Nobody from Central Office came over and said, I am not able to take my break. I am not able to eat. I, I don't have chairs to sit on. It's the teachers. The teachers are the ones that are saying these things. So.
Do you know that people in the Central Office didn't talk to Jeremy?
I don't know.
Lieutenant?
I don't know.
I'm just raising a point here.
I don't know, sir. I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I don't want to see the teachers leave because the teachers are the ones that are directly working with the students. And if teachers are not there, how are the children going to learn?
Well, Frank, Jeremy, can I speak on this?
Excuse me?
Yeah. Dr. Knight, I, I appreciate, you know, these comments, but I really think the direction is a little unfounded. And the truth is that you did have an opportunity to help the teachers in the way that they were asking to be helped. When I made a motion to appease the request that they were making, right? And you didn't second that. So you had the opportunity to help them and there was no second from anybody on the school board for that. And when they gave this the first.
When was this?
This was in one of our meetings. And when we had this first load of no confidence, there was one member on this committee that had any form of outreach, right? And there was one member that made any motions to appease their requests or to look into that further, and that was me. And I don't think the, the narrative that you're having right now, that Central Office staffers should be, you know, in the schools, teaching classrooms. I mean, sure, it's, it's an all hands on deck mentality, but I think the first, you know, offer of remedy here isn't to attack them, you know, personally and say they should be in the classrooms. I think the first question and the obvious answer is that we're not paying them enough. That we're not paying them enough, that we're not competing with surrounding districts to get subs in, to fill those empty classrooms. There's a lot, you know, different ways to, to approach this. And there's a lot of different reasons why we have a staffing shortage right now. And there's a lot of different ways to help the, the teachers' union and to appease the request that they're making. And there's been a lot of opportunities for that up until today. And I just don't think that this, this stance of, you know, Central Office should be in the classrooms is the solution that we've ended on. This whole, this started with them making very basic requests of what we do and we haven't done a single one of them. And one of them was not asking Central Office staff to, to fill in classrooms. I don't think that's what they're asking for and I don't think that's a reasonable solution.
Rosemary?
I'd be speaking about the, the temporary emergency agreement to have coverage if, you know, one teacher covering for another. That was under emergency circumstances and it was a good, good stopgap. But you can't continue long in a reasonable fashion to teach under that. So I think that we, what, if, if we could develop a, a longer, something more appropriate for today, that was a stopgap. It worked temporarily, took some pressure, but these, these requests is, are very reasonable for teachers' life, teachers' lifestyle. And so that's all I wanted to say.
Just, just for clarification, the, and Mr. Schmidt, you can feel free to chime in here for, for not, for speaking out of schools, no pun intended. But this is the second year that we've entered into a memorandum of understanding related to substitutes. We're, I think we're working together to try a, I'll call it a sustainable, longer-term We're welcome for all suggestions, if they're from committee members, but I think between members of the FEA and teachers and paras, I think we're probably, and again, I'm looking over directly at Ms. Schmidt here, but I think we're feeling the most acute challenge is on our paraprofessional staffing, especially in some of our specialized programming. That's a consistent issue across, I'll say, three schools that we're, that we're in discussions on, having conversations about. So, you know, if it was as simple as just kind of taking one group of people and to another, but it's different and actually it's, I'm looking, reading Ms. Schmidt's head movements here, it's, it's not that simple. We're trying to work together and also to try to create different ways to reach out to staff. Actually, at one recent meeting I was at, terms of paying for the para protests and, you know, for the staff before they get reimbursed, things, try to make less, have less barriers for potential staff to, to join us. Then there's still the issue of training. And we're talking about how do we train staff once, especially paraprofessionals? They require training before they actually enter the classroom so they don't leave our employ after two days. And then we're back where we started and people are stressed out as they were before. So it's a, it's a dilemma. I mean, if it was a simple problem, if it was like a math problem, there would be, you know, one plus one is two. This one is kind of one plus one is we're trying to get to two and it's hard finding that other one to stay for sometimes a day, two days, or a week. And Ms. Schmidt is nodding. So it's something that is, is a major challenge for us. I think I've shared with the school committee that this is a major challenge in representing about 75% of states across the country have identified special education staff and just alone as a staffing issue, not, not to mention the subject matter, science, technology, math, shortage of teachers. Again, Ms. Schmidt, feel free to chime in here.
I, I'm sorry, it was not.
So it's, it's, it's something that we're trying to, let me finish.
Yep.
Create, you know, new ways to recruit staff and also try to retain staff as well. So.
Just following on that, I would like to be included if you have a session of just sharing thoughts. We, you know, we haven't developed thoughts here that would work. We're just trying to, trying to help also come up with something. If you end up having that kind of a session, I would like to be involved with it. You, with the teachers and.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. I just want to go back and address Dr. Knight's idea of Central Office staff subbing.
It's just an idea. I really don't mean to harm.
It's a great idea, Dr. Knight, because that, we're currently doing that. So what happens is at any morning when a principal is unable to staff their building, they, they reach out to myself or Mr. Jokula about six o'clock in the morning. And then what happens is I get on the phone and I contact all our directors who have previously been in the classroom. And I say, hey, I need six or seven directors to go over and help at this school for the day. So that's what they do. They clear their schedule and they go. I myself have, have been in the classroom over the last few years, helping sub in addition to the directors at Central Office. So it does happen.
Wonderful.
It does happen.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And I would just add too, I had the opportunity to spend a week at Rheingold helping out and you don't want me teaching any elementary classrooms. I can guarantee you that right now.
But just to clarify, I mean, that's an emergency measure for extreme situations.
Correct.
The sustainable solution is not. The sustainable solution is not having supplemental central office staffers in classrooms. It's a lot, it's good, you know, it's lots of good things, but, you know, we need to start having a conversation about having competitive wage to surrounding districts and having a reliable solution to this problem, which, again, is, it's easier said than done. It's a problem that every school district's facing. Every school district is struggling to remedy. There's no short-term solutions. So it's a huge problem that requires a lot of conversation that we've been having and will continue to have.
Mr. Organ, I think we should be opening up negotiations relatively soon.
Yep.
And money will be a big issue this year. And if we can do anything that we can to make us even more competitive in the area, we are going to do it.
Yeah. You're here.
Yeah, so we're planning that. And I've spoken to Mr. Jokula, and we're, you know, and we don't want to start getting into negotiations, but Mr. Jokula has some good ideas on things that we can do and things they're looking to do to make things more financially better for teachers.
Agreed. And then there's the other issue of, you know, as a committee, I think we, it is due for us to have perhaps another conversation, hopefully outside of executive session, about this overarching issue that they're bringing up. And I think we really need to come together on that as a separate topic than just the teachers' shortage.
Kind of out of the ordinary, but Ms. Katie, anything you'd like to add, like to throw in or?
I just, I appreciate this conversation that you're having, and I just kind of want to point out that we're kind of talking about two very different things, subbing and lack of staff.
Right.
Or we're just talking about two very different things. Day-to-day subbing, we've got that covered, mostly, depending on the air. The bigger concern is we cannot recruit people in Pittsburgh. We cannot hire them. Recruiting and keeping people is an issue. Being competitive is an issue. Pay is an issue.
Yeah.
Retaining people is an issue. For various reasons, which is a whole conversation I would love to be able to have.
I think, as Mr. Organ has said, we need a conversation about this and where we're going to go with our salary schedule and the coming contract stock.
And you should be a part of it.
I think maybe parrot is also another issue.
Oh, that's...
That's the largest...
Anything else on budget?
I can quickly run through it, or I know we have a guest here, so.
Can we pause, Jeremy? Have our guests present, our guest, and if our guest can come up to the desk with Mrs. Kelly, yeah? As this has been a team approach in terms of, at least, Mrs. Kelly providing input and guidance on the English language learner videos. So just to introduce our guest, Dave Cartoonin of Cartoon E D U. He is the, I guess, principal sole proprietor...
Creator.
Creator of this firm. I met Dave last November at the school committee superintendent's conference down the Cape where I happened to hear him make a presentation with some other school districts, I guess I'll say his hometown school district. And it was about something different, but the idea, the video that he shared with those in attendance in his breakout session sparked some interest in me in terms of what could be done here in Pittsburgh. So it first started out with having some resources for our English language learners. And this is where I pass the baton to Mrs. Kelly and go from here.
Thank you, Mr. Jokula, Superintendent Jokula. So we are always looking to engage our families, right, all our families, but particularly our multilingual learners. And this was a great opportunity because it has so many visuals and subtitles, and we were able to translate it into our next largest language, which is Spanish. But it's really all Dave that created it, so I'm going to pass. I just filled out a questionnaire and he put it all together, so.
Thank you, Eva. Thank you, Mr. Jokula. Thank you, members of the board, and representative from the union, too. My wife is an educator and a member of MTA. So I was brought to this not only as a product of public schools. I should thank you for this point of personal privilege because my father and grandparents are all Gardner Tigers. And so coming over to Pittsburgh, you know, one day ago may have been dicey. But I saw and felt the pressures that teachers and administrators and students were under, you know, especially in the last three years. My wife has been an educator for 20. I was a journalist for many years and wanted to find a way to try to turn down the volume on some of that pressure. And after my presentation in Hyannis in November, Mr. Jokula and I got together and started discussing this. And like I said to Ms. Kelly and the wonderful members of her staff, I'm just the amplifier. They're the music. And so when you watch this, I hope that this is the product of all of the English language instruction that's happening in your schools, all of the teachers and all of the administrators who try and help people feel welcome and comfortable. And I hope it is incredibly effective to get families more engaged, improve the quality of their instruction, and just improve the experience that everyone can share here. Because I know from my own experience that public education is the greatest vehicle for mobility that we have. And I want to do everything that I can to help. So it's my pleasure to be here with you, and I hope you enjoy what we came up with.
Thank you.
Okay. So, yep.
Me and Pittsburgh Public Schools. We need you. They need you. We need you to develop a strong partnership to support them in their educational journey. Pittsburgh Public Schools, our teachers, our administrators, and our staff are here to support your family every step of their journey. Our partnership starts when we have open communication with each other. We are here to share information about school, inform you about opportunities for you and your child, answer your questions, listen to your concerns, and solve problems with you as partners in your child's education. To ensure we can communicate with you, we have added translators, translation tools, and supports at every school to enable more opportunities to communicate with each other. The more we communicate together, the more your child will grow, learn faster, and be more successful in school. We are proud of our community in Pittsburgh, and we want to welcome you into it. Here are other ways we can support your family and your student. English language support based on English language level. Adult ESL classes. All year long, we offer nine-week courses for parents delivered over the computer. We will place you in a course based on your English language level and can even provide a computer to you if you need one. Click on the link on your screen to learn how to enroll. We also offer free breakfast and lunch at every school for every student. We can provide information to parents about each of our schools. We also offer support for families struggling with housing security. We can deliver after-school tutoring and online tutoring supports to your children if they need extra help. We have translators at all our schools to ensure clear communication with you and your student. And we have an English Learner Parent Advisory Council for parents to share their concerns, help us meet ongoing needs, and to ensure access to support for their students. You can see a complete guide to all community resources for families in Pittsburgh by clicking this link. These are the ways we are here to support you, your family, and your student. You can trust us. If your child is struggling or needs some support they're not currently receiving, contact us and we will help. We are here for you. We want to connect with you one-to-one to learn about your family, your student, and how we can grow and be successful together. Please click this link to provide a telephone number for us to contact you.
Nice. Rosemary?
I would like to make a comment.
Sure.
That is so friendly and calming and helpful and reassuring and welcoming. I'd love to see that, like, in the first room when people come into school every day, like that up on the wall. So that would even help the children to see all that. It'll help everybody.
Ms. Reynolds, I assure you that your staff member, Luisa Fernandez, made it sound even better in Spanish. So if you liked it in English, I can assure you it's even better in Spanish where my voice is not on there. So thank you.
But I mean, rather than on a computer or something that they have to check into...
Absolutely. And I insisted on coming in person because I've been to a few school committee meetings in my life after 15 years in the news. And it was important to me to see the reaction, but it's also important to me to stay connected to the issues that are happening here. And so by my coming here, I hope that you will all be the best evangelists for these videos, to make sure that they spread and are shared throughout the community.
And I was particularly touched because I had been thinking about all along offering the parents help for their language, you know?
Thank you.
In a friendly way, not, you know, sign up for this course that begins March 19th. Yeah, it's great. Thank you.
Jim?
How are, what are our plans to disseminate this video in Spanish?
So this is the world premiere, Jim. So, you know, we wanted to unveil this tonight, and also we have a, Dave helped to create a strategic plan video that Mr. Thompson will queue up next. But I didn't know if either Dave or Mrs. Kelly want to talk just about the languages translating into other languages, too, that functionality or that option.
So as Mr. Cartoonin said, Luisa translated into Spanish, which is seamless. She did do a great job. She has a great voice. And the other translations are subtitle settings that our families can set when they're watching the video.
And that's Portuguese, Hmong, and Haitian Creole.
But did you understand what I was saying? Bigger, bigger, in the school...
I hope you share it and play it everywhere you possibly can.
May not be articulated enough.
Absolutely.
So that they just catch it as they go by and they hear it's reassuring.
So actually, the first response is, the response we were looking for was that we want this video to help create a more welcoming and belonging environment. So thank you, Ms. Reynolds. So the next video that Mr. Cartoonin has worked on is our strategic planning video. And this one had some vocal editing, and really the students from Pittsburgh High School under the direction or arrangement of our music director, Tabitha Greenlees, is on this one. So take it away, Mr. Thompson.
Right, here we go.
So here we go.
All means all. Every student, every day, no exceptions.
At Pittsburgh Public Schools, this is our promise. It serves as our north star for everything we do.
We are confident we will fulfill our promise.
If all staff, families, and community partners collaboratively identify and remove barriers to personal growth and achievement...
Then every student will be ready to learn and access high-quality core instruction and social emotional support.
Our vision at Pittsburgh Public Schools is to provide learning experiences that engage all students in achieving high academic standards while developing intellectual rigor, creative interest, and social characteristics...
That will prepare us for the challenges of living successfully and productively as citizens of this new century.
As a school community, our mission is to provide coordinated curricular and extracurricular experiences...
That inspire us to develop the academic, intellectual, creative, technological, and social skills necessary to work and to participate in our democratic society.
Highly qualified educators will staff our schools. Their mission is to motivate and support students...
So we will achieve high standards of literacy and literacy.
Teachers, administrators, and parents will collaborate to ensure the effectiveness of learning experiences that are differentiated...
To meet our variety of learning styles, needs, and interests.
And all members of the school community will focus on achieving academic excellence through curricula...
That promote inquiry and stimulate curiosity in the foundation of lifelong learning.
And we will achieve this mission while staying true to our core values to be...
Well-focused, vulnerable, trustworthy, adaptable, and collaborative.
We know we'll be successful when we meet these outcomes. Increase the percentage of students meeting or exceeding standards on ELA, math, and science. Close the achievement gaps in ELA, math, and science. Increase growth toward outcomes measured by our identified interim and formative assessments. Increase the percentage of students graduating in four years. Reduce chronic absenteeism in all grades. Decrease the rate of identification for special education. And increase the percentage of students reading at or above grade level by the end of grade three.
Track and report our progress every year.
And we will meet these outcomes while keeping our long-term commitments to: Curriculum that is accessible to and reflective of all students. A district-wide tiered system of academic and social emotional support. Staff development and a diverse recruitment plan. Strategic and effective use of all resources. A sense of welcoming and belonging with students, parents, staff, and all members of the community. And community and stakeholder engagement.
All means all. Every student, every day, no exceptions.
Well, that belongs at the superintendent's office or somewhere up there. It's far less friendly. It's educally, it's educational, languagey, however I can say that, and far less colorful. I think that the colorful and the warmth of the first one, you'd stop to listen. I'd look, but I'd walk by. I'm just telling you.
It is definitely a different audience segment, I would hope. And just to sort of repeat the music analogy, you'll know that language from the hard work you did in the strategic planning, right? There's no flowery prose in there. That's the work that was put into that product. Part of my hope for this venture that I'm creating is that it encourages people to engage that wouldn't have already engaged. These were already publicly available documents, right, that anyone could have accessed on the Pittsburgh Public Schools website to read about the strategic plan. There was another video I did from my hometown in Sudbury that was just calling on their core values and DESI standards and things like that, but of course was presented in a way that hadn't been presented before. And hopefully, if more people can see it and access it because it's presented on the screen, I hope it was, you know, a venture worth taking.
What does it cost for, I'm sorry, what does it cost for one of these videos?
I'm so glad you asked. I licensed each of these videos to Pittsburgh for 25 cents a student. And my intention behind that was because so much of the heavy lifting of animating can be reused if I can retain the intellectual property, I could relicence a similar topic to another school district where it's customized in a way that reflects their imagery, their school building, their logo, their colors, things like that. However, I think the credit goes to the administration for jumping on this process because my intention would be that no one gets as good of a price as the person who originated the topic. So in this case, Pittsburgh is the originator district. And any district that would be interested in relicensing the same topic where I can use 80% of the material to repurpose into their message will pay a premium.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Cartoonin?
Yeah, I just thought they were both great. I walked through South Street recently for a meeting, and there was all these new posters, too, that seemed kind of aligned with that same message. And I like that comment that you made at the beginning of the first video, which is that, which is true, that public education is the best vehicle for mobility. And that's something we need to focus on here in Pittsburgh. And I really think one of the biggest parts that I really liked about this video and about, one of the focuses that we're having as a school district now, is really just looking at it from a community standpoint, particularly the adult classes for ESL. That's incredibly important. Getting the word out about that is incredibly important. Some of the posters that were up at South Street were in similar veins, but it was talking about all the different ways that the school district can help the families that are here, from, you know, from food insecurity to housing insecurity to learning English to you name it. You know, we can either help you with it or point you in the right direction. So putting that word out there that we're a resource for those things is just, it's half the battle. And this is a great job, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for driving out here, Dave, and...
Always happy to.
Yeah, again, tonight was the world premiere, as I said earlier, but again, there are two different videos, two different audiences. And again, and just to confirm, the second video, does that also have the language?
We'll need to do some translation.
Okay, well, okay.
And I think that was a very good premiere, but I already saw some things up there that I want to tweak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you go, I'd like to understand, who are you again? And are you the artist and you the creator of this concept?
So without taking too much of another... So, without taking too much of another point of personal privilege, I'm Dave Cartoonin.
Dave Cartoonin?
Yep. In Gardner, it was Cartonin when my great-grandfather was making chairs at Haywood Wakefield.
Cartoon, you're cartoonist.
Yes. But on my first day in kindergarten in school, they asked me if I made cartoons, and now I finally am.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, the, most of the imagery is stock imagery from Adobe Creative Suite. I do the animating and the movement.
Oh, neat.
I do the voicing.
Just get the color in there. You got to get the color.
And it sure beats going to school committee meetings as a reporter for, you know, some of the television stations that I, that I have represented in the past.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your creativity.
Okay, we got back to budget.
Okay.
Back to budget. Budgets it is. See if it's up. And, yes. Okay, so we, we're talking a little bit about it, and we'll come back to some of the themes that we were reviewing previously. Quickly, in an update, today, today is that. It's an update. We have another resource-only subcommittee meeting on May 9th, next Tuesday. We'll get into more depth on kind of moving forward with recommendations for the amount of funds that we have to, available to invest in, in the staffing, in the students, in the school capitals, investments that we're looking to make. The first reading really of our budget will be at the May 15th school committee meeting. We'll follow that up with a resource subcommittee meeting on May 30th, and then a final reading on June 6th. Some of the material that, that I'll show here is a review, I think, some of it, but I think what it highlights is with respect to our foundation budget, especially over the past three years with, with the advent of the Student Opportunity Act in Massachusetts, there is an infusion of funding that is available now in the Fitchburg Public Schools in ways that just had, previously had not been. I think as you look at what that means, and I know we talked about this a little bit, about what Student Opportunity Act is, it's a, it's a law that is now being phased in over originally seven years, but six years. It's entering into the third year that the state legislature has, has invested what will ultimately be $11 billion more into public education. So you can see for the past three years, the foundation budget increase in the Chapter 70 funds that are available, that's the funds that come from the state of Massachusetts, have significantly increased for the Fitchburg Public Schools. And, and it's based on, in terms of calculation, a certain set of factors, which, which I'll demonstrate in a, in a minute, but what we have to do as a district also is determine how do we invest those funds? You know, what is the way that we will utilize the additional funds to support our students, to support our staff, to support the facilities in which our, our students and faculties and families are, are living day to day? So for Fitchburg Public Schools, we are really, again, as Mr. Cartoonin's presentations demonstrated, investing significantly in, in curriculum materials. We are investing significantly in co-teaching, inclusion models for students with not only disabilities, but language learners. I really loved in his, in his cartoon there how the flags blended together. Like you said, Ms. Reynolds, the colors of those flags is very captivating, but most importantly, welcoming in that sense of all belong in the Fitchburg Public Schools. And I think ultimately that, you know, mental health, supporting social emotional learning, and the needs that our students and families have, again, are big, are big items that we're, we're seeking to invest and continue to invest. I think as you look at, you know, how have we gotten feedback around that? There have been surveys that have been produced. There was a, a meeting at Memorial's Auditorium in March two that was open to the public. It coincided with parent night, parent conferences, and, you know, and looking at those responses, there are topics that, that Google Form, comments from, from staff members, from families, I think some students also completed it, are noted there. And again, I think we've heard a little bit about these topics, even talking about, you know, the furnishings and staffing and subbing and the different things that, you know, we are confronting as challenges. This, I think, is an important slide. It's a lot of numbers, and I'll only really highlight on the areas in red that are arrows. So as the, the way that we now are determining the amount of funds that are going to be used to support the foundation budget from year to year, it's really driven by various categories, and they're listed as groups. So you can see in the top-left corner, Group 1 at the top, down to Group 12. If a school district is in Group 1, that means 0 to 5.99% of their students are identified as low-income. They would have a certain number to multiply by the number of students that they have in their school. For the Fitchburg Public Schools, we are in, in Group 11, Category 11. DESI actually uses the term category, Department of Ed. That means that 70 to 79.9% of our students are identified as low-income. What that driver then does is in that low-income column, the multiplier is a larger number by the number of students that you have as identified as low-income. So that you can see in the bottom of that slide, in, in the arrow that's pointing to the right, 30%, 30.6 exactly, of our overall foundation budget is driven by the fact that we have 78.5% of our students as identified as low-income. When we look at that, we, we are actually, you know, focused on that as, as an area to, for, for not only this year, but the next three years that Student Opportunity Act phases in, because there is the potential that we, as a, as a school community, could be in, in Group 12, Category 12, in FY25's budget development. We're about 120 students away from, from that, from that identification, which would just make that number even larger. In that case, then, the, the foundation budget percentage would be likely 35%. If, in this year's calculation, it'd be an additional $2.8 million. So again, I point that out because I know it was a previous discussion we had had at one of our meetings here. It is not a bad thing. It is not a good thing. It is a thing. It's, it's the condition of the Fitchburg Public Schools, and, and the, and the best part of that is we have additional resources to support the students that we serve. How we do that, the challenges that we face in terms of staffing, that doesn't go away just because we have more money, but the reality is with more money, we might be able to do more things. So you can kind of see here on this slide, it just demonstrates the percentage of, of the overall budget as, as it relates to the low-income has increased steadily so that now it's over 30% for the first time. So of that $96 million, 30% of those funds come in of the 96 due to the fact that we have a significantly high rate of students who, who are categorized as low-income. The per pupil expenditure has also increased pretty dramatically over the last five years from just under $13,000 per student in 2020 to what we, what we have identified as over $17,000 per student in the FY24 budget. So again, these are, these are thing, these are realities, these are, I, these are, this is the way that the, the foundation budget is established and determined. How we use that money, what we do with those funds to invest in our schools, in our students, in our staff, you know, obviously, we're going to continue to discuss throughout May and into June. In terms of considerations, you know, these are some drivers that we're looking at now. So as you can see, with respect to that $7.839 million increase from the previous year, we are, we are intending to increase staffing. A tentative approvals, an increase above what the current staffing level now is $2.65 million. There's always rollovers, there's, there's contracts, there's collectively bargained agreements. That's a $2 million assessment right there. We are choosing to move in and have discussed this with resource instructional supplies into the general fund, into the general budget in the coming years. This is actually a really, a, a good move and something that it's the right time to do it. There are transportation factors, of course. There's special, special education out of district costs, of course. Those always continue to rise, but we are looking to also increase capital project investments in the buildings. We've been talking a lot about that. Our current budget line for that is $600,000. We intend to move that up to $1.1 million next year because we have a significant amount of projects that are sort of in the queue right now. We have a project manager, who is our on-call project manager, answer advisory, they've been doing a great job. We met with architects last Thursday and went around to six facilities. Six of the buildings to, to address either HVAC improvements, to address roof projects, to address the Longchamp Auditorium, you name it. There were a number of different projects there that we intend to utilize some of our general funds with some of the SRF funds and other things that we have. So it's a quick update. We'll be, we'll be certainly more fine-grained and detailed in the, in the coming presentations on May 15th and again on June 6th, but I wanted to just at least share a little bit about what drives our budget with Student Opportunity Act funds and resources, in addition to, you know, how we are looking to hopefully use those, those funds to invest in, in the outcomes that we hope for all of our kids. So I'm certainly glad to take any questions if there are any. And I'll go back to the budget calendar. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of questions, but maybe they're better for the resource committee. We can really dive into it.
Okay, yeah. Policy items.
Oh, boy. We have a bunch that's on for second reading tonight, and we have the high school attendance policy that's in for the first reading tonight. However the committee chooses to go through, happy to oblige.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of policy 5112. In the second reading, the policies 5103.01, policy 5120, policy 5701.03, policy 5713, and policy 5410.03.
So before we get a second on the motion, is there any questions about any of those items?
Yeah, I, I would object to waiving the readings.
You can't object. You can vote no.
Oh.
Let's, let's have a second of discussion.
Yes.
Discussion.
Well, we're, we're supposed to do a first and a second reading. If you want, and the public needs to hear it, what the subject is about. I mean, saying all of those numbers is mind-boggling, but if I see a great resistance to that, that really proper way of doing it, reading the first thing in committee, second thing in committee, bring your first and second, because the more you read it, the more you familiarize yourself with it, it, things pop up, and we understand better the ramifications of it. If you, I, I, the only thing I can say is, if you want to follow a practice of, of not redoing what we're supposed to do, the first, second reading, I certainly object to that, but if somebody could accurately synopsize the reading so that the public can hear the different matters that are in it, that might be a satisfactory, to my regard.
I would have a suggestion that we waive the first reading, which we have, we have a first and a second on, and that, the motion that there'd be a synopsis on the second reading.
A thorough synopsis so that the.
A synopsis, not the whole, and, but just a very, a very short paragraph is what it should be. And that's what most of the policies are, a short paragraph, and then the rules and regulations are not the policy. Rules and regulations and how they're implemented are not the policy. The policy is a short paragraph. And not all the rules and regulations.
That isn't what, actually, some of them are quite lengthy, but.
Well, it should, it should be.
But maybe the head of the, of the subcommittee could, could synopsize it so that the people will at least hear what we're speaking of rather than simply a number. I, I think that would, might be a compromise that would, I'd be happy with, let's say that.
I'd be happy to oblige for that. I just want to point out to the committee and to the public that this is a practice that we've been doing for, you know, the, all six years that I've been on this committee. And Ms. Reynolds, you have voted numerous, numerous, numerous times in waiving second readings.
Excuse me, sir, I'm going to have to object here. Please don't refer to me by name. Please, the contact of the thought, the intellectual thought of the matter. By rule, when we're, when we're in public meetings, we shouldn't really be referring to each other by personalities or thought. You know, there's a way, Robert's rules. You just don't refer to me, please, or to anybody else.
I'm not supposed to refer to you in the, in the meeting?
No, to the concept of the thought that I said, and, and, and what you have to say about that. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I don't think that's really based in any rules of Robert's Rules and Order or anything. I think you're just making that up because it's opportunistic.
We have, we have a motion and a second. We call for a vote.
What is the motion?
To waive, to waive the reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Dr. Knight?
I, I was just, can I just not vote this time?
Three, three in favor, one opposed, and one abstaining.
Abstain.
And that motion was as Mr. Walsh posed it, to waive all the readings?
Yes.
Yes, to waive the reading of the policies.
With the readings of the policy. Okay.
Okay. Action items. What do you want to do with the action items? You want to bundle, or do you want to go through each one?
May I just clarify that? You just voted to, to not do the readings?
Yes.
Or how does the public know what?
We waived the reading.
The first and second reading, or, or what?
We, we, the motion.
I made a motion.
Made a motion.
To waive the reading, the second reading of the five policies that are up for second reading, and the one policy that's up for first reading, and Mr. Horgan, I'm sorry, I'm mentioning your name, but seconded it. And then we voted on it, and it was voted three to one, and one person abstained from voting either way. Check line disappointed.
So we're, we're on to the action items. 23, 258, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the school calendar.
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
23, 259, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the second reading policy 5103.01. School choice.
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
I'm, I'm going to abstain because of the, of what I said before, but I would have voted for this if, if you had let the public know what it was about. No, because you didn't, or we didn't.
We're voting right now.
We're voting.
Yeah, but, but the subject matter of it should be discussed in public.
One abstain.
One abstention. 23, 260, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the second reading of policy 5120, assignment of students to schools.
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, for, for the same reason.
23, 261.
Mr. Stevens, I'm sorry, is that an abstention again?
3, 4, 1.
I believe I heard an abstain.
It was a no. No.
And then she said no.
It was a no.
Thank you.
Yep.
Approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the second reading of policy 5701.03, life-threatening food allergies.
Make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
4, 1.
One no. 23, 262, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the second reading of policy 5713, health, wellness, and safety policy.
So moved. Seconded.
Excuse me, you're, you're saying to accept the second reading, but there's been no second reading.
We waived it.
Oh, then you, then you're saying.
We waived.
You waived the second reading.
We waived the second reading. We took that vote already. Was a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One. 23, 263, approve the superintendent's recommendation, recommendation to accept the second reading of policy 5410-dash-point-03, school bus transportation.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One. 264, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the first reading of policy 5112, attendance, Fitchburg High School.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One. Executive session not at this time. Vote for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.